At the Fugilist's City Club of the United States of America, in two very public forums of stands, one nation, under God, indomitable with liberty and justice for all.
Do they have it?
Probably not, because I went to see the lawyers.
Yes, please, thank you, Andy.
Prior to the meeting, there was an executive session. The executive session was called pursuant to the number five dash fourteen dash one point five dash six point one subsection B six. With respect to the need to draw up from the government body this jurisdiction to receive information concerning the individuals' conduct indisposed before determination, the individual status as an employee, we just asked for a motion to certify that that's why the executive session was discussed on a call. That's all that was discussed in the executive session and there were no further matters discussed.
I made that motion.
John made a motion to approve, Rick made a second, is all in favor, all opposed, motion carried.
And based on the discussion, I don't believe there's any final motion to be taken. So that's all for these areas of session.
Thank you, Andy. So, we're going to go on with the agenda, Gina, until you find the thing.
Yep.
Okay. So, first thing on the agenda is the Riveter's Fast Pitch Request. So, this is a request from a fast pitch softball league, twelve and under, based out of southeastern Indiana, to use the town park on July twenty first from four to six, and August fourth from four to six. And we've already made this by the girls softball league, and they said this was not conflict, right?
Yes, and the coach, Rachel Reese, is a part of the girls softball organization.
Okay. If there's not any questions?
I made a motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve the Riveter's Fast Pitch Request, is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Next is La Calaca Bar and Grill LLC Letter of Support. So, La Calaca is going to be a bar and grill that is opening at five five nine Main Street, which is where Corners used to be, or Lulu's, and they are asking for a letter of support for their lip losses.
I made a motion to send the letter.
John made a motion to approve the letter, and allow me to sign, is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. I'm sorry, I forgot the claims of payroll. I forgot everything. Let's go back for a second, and let's do the minutes of the regular meeting as written.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
All, these are the minutes from June seventeenth, John made a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. And then for claims, claims total three hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Is there a motion to approve the claims, or any questions, Regina?
I make a motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve the claims, is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. And then payroll. There are two payroll things to sign. The first one is a total of seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-five cents, with overtime of four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. And then the second one is three thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-two cents. Is there a motion to approve both payrolls?
I make a motion to approve both payrolls.
John made a motion to approve, is there a second? Rick seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Okay, next is the Lexi Pool Update.
So, Terry, I had asked after our meeting with our HR representative, had asked for an update, because she would like to look at the completed SOPs, just to make sure that policy is matched with the handbook. And the update we got is that they are about eighty percent complete, there are just a few housekeeping issues they have to address. And I think once they do have everything in order, it would be Terry to get the draft to New Focus HR, just so they can make comments and make sure, you know, compliance with what that's going to be. And then after that, it looks like they'll have to address any edits that may be to be done before they can deploy.
Thank you. And I go back, I'm not sure why I can't follow the agenda, sorry. The unfinished business, the number one is the employee handbook update for Oldman's twenty twenty-four dash nine. Does the council want to continue to push that until we get a new town manager? Dan?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, so, the next item on the agenda is the town manager. So, the candidate that we offered the position to actually declined it last week, and so, we are now at a point where we still need to hire a town manager. So, I think we have a lot of options on the table, we could offer it to another candidate that we interviewed, or we could put it out for, to get more resumes, or whatever the council would like to do.
I think we start the process and maybe get more resumes. I think we start the process and maybe get more resumes.
Rick, Dan, do you?
I think so.
I mean, I would like to offer a different suggestion, is the, I mean, when we did the interview, it seemed like the second candidate was also very qualified. Would anyone like to consider just offering it to her? Okay. So, I'm sorry, John, did you make a motion for that?
Do I have to?
I think so.
Okay, I make a motion to start the process, the process of new for the town manager position.
John made a motion to re-advertise the position for new resumes, is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Okay.
You want to tell them we already approved it?
We approved it, all these guys? Oh, we already approved La Calaca.
No, thanks.
Oh, I thought you said the guys that just came in?
Yeah, we approved it.
That's you guys, sorry. I thought you guys were the building permit guys. Okay, thanks. Pardon? I'm not sure, do you want to?
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Would you like to talk?
I mean, no, I just...
John, it's on.
Please, thank you for the program. First of all, we just, we are the Basket Brothers, and we just met these guys, and we know they've been here in town for a few times, and we're here to support them to make our dream true. I just want to let you know that we came from Indiana, we have a few restaurants in the city in Indiana, we're partners in a big chain, and we want to, we want to do something with these guys for our own, so, thank you. And we're going to be willing to support you in anything we can do with the town to make them look cool, please let us know. And so, I want to stay here because I want to talk to everybody, I want to lose myself, and I want to know, I wanted to know my brother too, because he's going to be in charge of these guys. So, thank you, first of all, thank you so much. Gracias.
You own one in Oxford?
Yeah, we also have one in Oxford, Ohio, we're members, we're partners in that location too.
Good for you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
You guys can get that letter at the office, or do you want me to drop it off somewhere?
No, I don't know, I'll be wanting to, sorry, okay, wait.
Our office is at ten twenty, right behind the... You can just get it out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, thank you much.
Thank you for your work.
Okay, next is the six thirty-two Main Street facade work. So, this is Main Street Brookville, just trying to update some of their, improve the facade of their, the building that they, that we provide to them in kind, and it's just cosmetic stuff on the face. They did get the COA through the Historic Preservation Commission, because it is our building, we need to approve their changes. So, does anybody have any questions about, about the, oh, here it is, the COA, or the work that's going to be done, or?
The work.
The work that's going to be done on the facade?
Yes. The person doing it, do they have workers comp and insurance since it is a town building?
From what I understand, it's a volunteer that's going to be doing the work.
Now, will the town be held accountable if something happens? Fall off a ladder while you're painting, or?
I am not sure.
The different materials, are they just back out, as far as what type of materials is going to be used?
I think it's just a little piece of, sorry, I think it's just a little piece of wood, and then just paint, and maybe a tad bit of, what's that stuff you put in between bricks?
Mortar.
And some, yes, and some mortar in the places where it needs it.
I guess the biggest thing I had was as far as liability, you know, they need, we need to find out whether they have some type of insurance or something, considering it's a town building.
So, I would only assume that Main Street Brookville has liability insurance, or renters insurance in some way, don't they?
There's something we need to find out before we turn it over.
Okay.
Does, does Main Street not own the building, or is it the town?
The town. So, do we want to table this until we find out, or do we want to approve it pending them providing proof of their liability insurance?
Let's say, proof pending.
Okay. Is, can you put that in a motion?
Can you call your insurance company and ask them if they would put that volunteer as additionally insured on your policy for that project? It might not even cost you anything, if you'd like to phone call the insurance company. But then if something happens, it's a hit on our insurance, not on their insurance. I think if they're insured, it would be a better solution, and if they're not insured, then you need to explore options.
I make a motion that we allow this contingency, they're getting insurance.
On proof of insurance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. John made a motion to approve their work at six thirty-two Main Street. Contingent on proof of insurance, is there, is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Next is the Salary Ordinance Amendment twenty twenty-four dash thirteen.
So, after, we also met with New Focus HR regarding some of the new FSU labels. Kristen did inform us that we have two employees that are considered exempt, but should be non-exempt and pay hourly instead of salary. Those two positions were utility supervisor and assistant town marshal. She said if they are actively doing work not strictly administrative, we should have them listed as hourly. So, I have corrected that according to their salary. And then also, the other change I made was for the town manager, since Ms. Fennell did not accept the position, I put that back as vacant, and then the announced that we started to and from two thousand twenty-five hundred five hundred and fifty, and vacant. Just the only changes I made.
And then in January, the other employee that will turn from exempt to non-exempt is the golf course manager. That won't be till January though, so. Any questions about the salary ordinance, or motion to approve?
Do we have to do the suspension of rules?
Yes.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules.
John made a motion to suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carried unanimously?
I make a motion that we approve the amendment to the salary ordinance.
John made a motion to approve the amendment, which is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen to the salary ordinance, is there a second? Dan seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Next is the preserving Main Street draw, the grant draw request number six.
Carrying with ARA has submitted a grant draw request six. Pool group, the amount of their claims, this portion was three hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and fourteen cents, with, and then in addition, seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-two cents coming from the extra portion, that's coming from the building owners who are participating. And then ratios submitted invoices in the amount of twelve thousand, and ARA is requesting their first draw of twenty-five thousand.
Any issues with these, Gina?
No.
If there's not any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
John motioned to approve the preserving Main Street grant draw request number six, is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Next is the IUDC grant agreement. So, this is the grant agreement that we are signing for the grant that it won't be announced until next week. So, this is a grant agreement for the Business Incubator Program that we submitted for, which is the eight-week boot camp, the Jump Start Program, and the started up part of that program to instill more entrepreneurship in Brookville. And this is the agreement that we have to sign in order to start that going, which starts the first of July. So, Andy, did you have a chance to read it?
Yeah, I looked at it over the day while I was in town.
It's good to go?
Yeah, no issues with the IUDC grant, but there was a spot that we got to fill in, or notice we didn't get sent to, but I think Gina said she flagged it.
Okay, so this is just for my signature. So, is there a motion to approve the IUDC grant agreement?
I made that motion.
John made a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. And Gina, do you want us to sign this? Okay, you got the bad page. Sorry, I did not pass this around, the salary ordinance. Gina, do you want me to sign this ratio agreement, or invoices? One off time, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
And then, the Yargian permit?
So, I apologize, Mr. Tischler is here for a permit, for an addition onto Yargian's I-Center property. They did get their COA approved at last meeting. The building permit, you can see, I don't know, Tim, did you have a chance to review the addition on the back?
I reviewed the addition, and I don't, as long as it, if the county passes the variance, I have no issue with it.
So, sir, do you want to come up and, sorry, we're just getting this, would you mind coming up and just explaining to us what you're going to do? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ken Tischler, Andy Yargian asked me to do a remodel on the exterior of his building and add an addition on the back. The existing office is basically an L shape, and we're going to fill in the hollow part of the L. So, we're not really changing the overall footprint of his building as it looks, as it sits from quarter to quarter, but we are filling in, which would be now, I think it's like twenty-two by twenty-four on the one side. The existing building is actually right now like a foot off of the property line as it sits, so the variance I have to set, asked for the county is to basically extend that building, you know, down that property line to fill in on the backside.
On the side of the, of the three-story?
Yeah, on the side of the two or three-story red brick building, so as it is right now, it sits like almost right on the property line, so. And he's just adding on to add more waiting area and two more exam rooms, so his patient load is getting busy.
Good.
Yeah.
And then, did you, are you doing anything to the front? I feel like the historic preservation said something about the front of the building.
Yeah, we're actually going to put an atrium on the front, or a vestibule that is going to be glass. We're going to redo the outside in consideration of the parapet that's above the brick line. It's kind of like an older, it's really just vertical metal. We're going to take that off, and we're going to use AGM panels, which is architectural glass or metal. And then, we potentially might end up painting the brick, it's going to depend on how well we can match that brick. But that's really up to Andy, because the new addition's on the backside where you really won't see it. But, we're going to probably have to put a new rubber roof on it because I was up inspecting that, but we're going to just try to update the facade, make it look a little, little better.
And do you want to talk to us about the parking lot?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to talk to us about the parking lot?
Yeah, right now, so this project is, is basically in two projects. So, he wants to redo his parking lot on the empty lot where they tore down the house, and he's seeking from the state approval for a curb cut. Initially, it was tore down because of its relation to the hill coming up, where the entrance would be. So, he redid it to have an entrance and then an exit out the back, and the state got a lot more receptive to that. So, right now, we're focusing on just getting approval to start the actual construction of the building, and then once we get that going, we're going to work with the state to get that approval, and then come back and refile with everybody concerning the new parking lot area. Like, everybody seems like, well, we should get that approval first, but we can do the whole construction, we could actually repave the whole lot and not do the curb cut. So, it's really not a contention on the project, you know, moving forward and getting done. I think for him, it would be great if he could get an ingress and egress, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Mr. Tischler? Without, Tim, you good?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the building.
That being contingent on anything?
Just the, the filling in the L and the...
I sent them the, go for variance to rent.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yes, I would say the contingent of public housing, yes.
I make a motion that we approve, willing to permit contingent on receiving a variance.
John made a motion to approve contingent on a variance, is there a second?
Second.
Rick seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Okay, is that it?
You pick that up, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that, thank you.
From the state first, he's going to get a permit from the state first, that's what he's working on. Then he's going to come back through all of us and get a permit for that. Any other, any, anything from the council?
Yes, I would like to note any of your notes for this month, the month we're recording. You said that the Four Edge Association Board is going to now hook onto our lift station and put the meter into the lift station. I was wondering how that happened, since nobody else can do anything about it.
So, I, I spoke with Tim, who told me that, and I spoke with him before this meeting, and I misunderstood him, so he is here to clarify.
This was a miscommunication on my part, because I've been familiar with the project. There are actually two lift stations involved in this project. Our, the town's lift station was originally involved, and they had to have a lift station at the building in order to pump this to our lift station. I think that's where the communication very broke down, because it's not at the, as of right now, it is not at the, the station, at the town, they were going to put the meter at the lift station at the building. But, that may have like changed also, there's been talk, so I'm not sure what is happening just yet.
Are you okay, is that the other lift station, or do you want some more?
Well, and I've, I said this to our CP, that I'm not happy with that situation, but if that's the only compromise we can come up with, I can live with it. There's other considerations that they have to take effect, that like, we don't want, we, there's, there's no way that we can monitor anybody that is up on this line, past there, so that, they're going to be responsible, this is the different ones, the tricky part, that responsible for monitoring that way is the reporting it to us. This is where it gets a little tricky, so, I'm not sure we have all that in our crap head. And there's no, there's no official meetings or anything, I guess, just talking to individuals, so, I'm not sure where we stand exactly with that. But the part about the lift station, that was a miscommunication on my part, because I assumed that everybody knew the two lift stations involved, so, I'm sorry for that. But, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
The permit first, the permit.
You saw the email I sent, I s, the, the I D M inspector said that any line like that that goes over multiple property, multiple property lines is required to have a permit. But then their contractor says they don't need a permit, so that's kind of, that's, nothing has changed, I'm not not really sure how to move forward, maybe, maybe we should schedule another meeting?
Can we accept a line that doesn't have the permits and everything?
Can we accept a line without an agreement and without permits? I mean, I looked at the exceptions statute or rule that was sent out, and I think that was more so if you're hooking a commercial building up to a sewer line, it's on that, you know, runs in front of that property, yeah, you don't need a permit for that. But this is a little more than that, this is running a line to a forced rain. And that's, I'm, I'm certain, I can argue that I can, that what their job is, and their job says that they need a permit, but also there needs to be some type of agreement to, to outline who's going to be responsible for the maintenance on this line, who's going to pay for, who's going to pay for the meter, and the meter needs replaced, and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Is there, Andy, do, is there somewhere we can find an agreement that's kind of like what we want? So we have somewhere to start, and then we can just add and delete, and just push that across the table, say, this is what we're going to have to require? I just, I feel like, you know, something in writing maybe that to jumpstart these conversations, because they're all really just verbal right now, so. Okay. So we'll have to find something. I think maybe after we get that, maybe after we figure out what should be included, and, you know, take whatever way, maybe we need to sit down with 4-H and Chaffee and their board and see what, you know, see if we can figure this out. And this, this hasn't happened, where we accept a sewer line that someone else built, I guess, in, ever. The last sewer line that was attached to our sewer plant was built by the town, so.
Yeah, we, we haven't accepted any sewerings, so to speak, that, that are not in town.
Right.
That, that, all the other places that are annexed, either, I take that back, we have accepted them, but not with a contract or agreement.
Right. I think that's the key.
Yeah, so no one can just hook into the line with that agreement or contract.
So we're going to be. Okay, what else? Do you have anything else, John? Yeah?
No.
Do you have anything? Public? Does the public have anything?
You like, you like, you said the signs went to the parking lot.
Yes, Rocky said, he put the park signs up today, so those for the year, they also put the, I have it on here. They also put the speed signs on St. Mary's Road. So that's good, we'll be able to have those for a few weeks, and then we'll get the data from when we turn them in on.
He was getting quotes for rubble strips too, there.
Yep, he's going to.
That like the ones that's on 101?
That go across the road?
Across the road.
I'm not sure.
That's a pretty good rubble strip right there.
I bet it's too loud.
How loud is too loud?
They're good, they're good.
There are rubble strips that are not as loud, I just don't know how, what they're called, what they look like. Second thing is, uh, so Andy, um, in our advertisement for the park, parking lot bids went out, and those bids are due back on July 18th. And what we said in the advertisement is that they'd be opened on July 18th, 2:00 P M, I think it said. So I was wondering, is it possible for us to just do that in the town building, and like Facebook Live it? Open it, announce it?
Yeah, you just, you would just say, you open the bid, read the bids, and then say that the bids will be reviewed and by the town council over next week.
And then we can give them to.
It's just the opening, so you're not doing anything.
We don't need a forum? We don't need to, it's not a public meeting? I mean, people can come in and.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an open, you know, bid opening, it's a bid opening, but yeah, you don't need to.
We don't need to advertise or anything special?
So I don't need to submit those to anyone?
No, that was already, your advertising was already done.
Wasn't it? Yes, absolutely.
And it's not going to be a meeting, because the whole council.
Okay, so.
You want to have a forum there.
Do we need to Facebook Live it? Or do we need to, you know, put a camera on us and tell the public, or can we just open them and read them?
You can, if you want, you can.
But we don't have to? Okay.
It's only the people that should, that put in bids are going to show.
Are going to be the only ones that care anymore? Okay, is that okay with everybody, we just open them and?
Because as far as the general public being told at that next meeting, it'll be, and these were the bids we received, these were the amounts, this is the one we're going to go.
Okay, Roger that, thank you. That's great, good, okay. Um, next is, I'd like to go ahead and schedule some cyber security training for our employees, as long as everybody's okay with that. I think we need to brush up on our skills for making sure we prevent scams as much as possible. Okay. Speed signs, I did that, opioids.
Usually insurance tells you that, you have to do that.
Oh, okay. So, um, for, uh, I have opioid staying alive, so I met with Bethany Gores, who is the director of staying alive in town. And what she, uh, talked about was, I, I asked her about, because we have opioid money, I think it's maybe 20,000, and I asked her if she had any ideas on what we could do with it, and she, we talked a little bit about Family Fund Day, do you guys remember that? They used to have in the Upper Park on Memorial Day, after the parade. And she was interested in reviving that, and that she said maybe we could use that money towards that event. I'm not sure what they would need to spend money on, but I, I said I would talk to the council and see how you guys felt about that as one of the initiatives that they could start working on.
Was this the restricted money or the unrestricted?
So obviously, you know, it was restricted because of the education.
Yes, you just have to find, there's a whole list of what the restricted money can be used on, and it has to be used to evade the opioid epidemic. So you just need to find one of those things that would fit for that project, for that.
Okay. Okay. So I'll let her know that we're amenable to starting that up for next year. Because it'll take a while to get it started, she's brand new, of course, to the position, so. Uh, the other thing that she talked about, which is kind of weird, because she also has a grant program as well, that she has to give money out to, uh, for, to prevent the, the abuse of drugs. And what, what the county sheriff has done is applied, and so they get money from staying alive to host National Night Out. But the way that their funding goes is that they have to ask for it, like now, in July for next year, which is August, which is very strange, but that's just how they do it. So, um, and she said, if you want to figure for $10 a person, then you can kind of figure out how many people you think will come, multiply that by 10, and then ask for that in the grant. Uh, so I was wondering if that's something that we would like to have our P D do, and have a National Night Out, and have it at the pool? You know, maybe have free admission for the pool, and then have them there, I think. I think they've done it one year with, like, they grill out food, it's like free hamburgers and hot dogs and chips and stuff for all the kids, and then the kids can interact with all the police department. Kind of like a community event type deal, and it's the, I think it's the first Tuesday in August? Okay.
So it'll be next?
So this, if, if they apply for this grant currently, that, that money will go towards next year. Uh, but we can still do National Night Out this year, I mean, if we want to fund it from our general account, or I mean, I'm not sure how much money that would be, or what we would need, or anything like that. It would be nice to have it, at least in town.
You say it's the first Tuesday in August?
I feel like it's the first Tuesday, yes.
So would it be during the day or evening? What would you plan to work on?
It's a night, so it's.
Ash night out.
It's a night out. It's the night out. Nightish. Is there anything scheduled on that day?
If school starts at 7:00, so I'm not sure, we'd have to clear it with the neighbors to make sure we can have workers there? If you did have a little. Or just be what, hot lovers?
I would say, yeah, free admission, you know, have some food and hot dogs with the, with the local police and, you know, establish that relationship with the kids. And last but not least, um, they did ask if one of, someone from the police department could go to their monthly meetings. It's the last Thursday of the month at 4:00. And their next meeting is August 22nd. They're not having one in July. And their, I think their meeting was, well, it doesn't matter. They're not having one in July, so their next meeting is August 22nd. I just, you know, I said I'd ask the council if that's something that we want the police department to do or not.
Yeah, so you got Tom?
Yeah, Dan?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great, that's, I think that's all the things for that.
I have one question.
Sure.
With us accepting bids on the 18th, our next meeting is like the 5th?
I know.
Is that time sensitive, this approval of the bid? You're talking, giving away three weeks.
Right. I mean, if, if the council's willing to meet in a special meeting, we can do that. I asked Tribe how long it would take them to look at the bids, let's just say they get, you know, five. And he said we could, we could look through them in a week. So as long as we give them a week to take a look, then we could have a meeting after that, if you guys are willing to, to come together and, and look at the bids and, and then award the contract. We can do that, if you want. Better than.
Down pressure over a little bit.
Okay. So that would be so maybe like the 29th or 30th of July, maybe? Everybody in town?
Yes.
Oh, you're going on vacation?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I'll, I'll get with Tribe and schedule it for like maybe that Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday in the evening, and then we'll go from there? Thanks, okay, that's great. And, um, last but not least, I just wanted to.
I don't know if we need to do that, but I do not think we'll do the evening first.
Okay.
I would, I don't know how much insight I'd be able to offer on this particular matter.
I think, I think it'd be okay with Tribe telling us, um, and, and probably Tim and Rocky taking a look, Andy, but okay. For parking lot, right? Thanks. Last but not least is, um, I just wanted to remind the council about the open door law. So the open door law basically says that, um, any public business should be discussed in a public meeting. And so I just wanted to remind everyone that a majority, um, that we can't meet with two other council members, we can only meet with one and discuss issues with one. And I would also like to just remind everyone that, that, um, the council speaks, the only time the council speaks is during these meetings. And outside of these meetings, we can't, as a lone person, speak on behalf of the council. So I just wanted to remind everyone that when you're out there in the public, you can't say the council will, because you're just one person. And so I just wanted to remind everyone about that, um, open door law. Andy, do you have anything to add? Thank you.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
John made a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. Thank you all for coming. Meeting's adjourned.